Get your cup. Get your cup. Oh, we're on now. It didn't start. I didn't know it was on. Well, I'm not gonna eat during the council.
I want to step out if you're going around.
Me, can we all step out?
I didn't know it was on.
Well, I guess I'm over here.
And in the room? Oh, we don't have any here. Good morning. But I can hear you there. It's me. Sorry folks, it'll be just a moment. We're waiting for the computer to load. Yes. We're just not doing anything. Clarion lost without the script, so it's gonna be a thing. Oh, come on, you. Yeah.
Maybe. Maybe tonight.
Seventy-five. It's too late, we'll just win. Geez, geez.
Is everyone ready?
So he'll get myself some coffee.
Thank you. Yeah, we are gonna be a moment here, so. Good evening, we'll call the City of Lincoln City Council Meeting to Order at 6:15 Monday, April 24th. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak here in the public comments section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Riley Hogland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Walke.
Here.
Kip Ward.
Here.
Thank you, as you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you also very much. Didn't happen tonight. And thank you Kathy for the paper version of this. Okay, consent agenda, we have the minutes of the work session meeting for April 3rd, 2017, the minutes for meeting April 10th, 2017.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Your honor, I abstain from voting, I didn't have time to review those minutes.
Both?
Either one.
All right, real good. All right, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. As my computer still turns and grinds. Okay, I know. Comments from citizen present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the numbers of persons present and signed up to speak. Their public hearing is G, right? Okay. Robert Thomas? You're not here for the public, the public hearing part? No, then come on, yeah, move on. It's confusing. Yeah, pull the mic close so we can hear you, give us your name, and you just launch right now.
My name, Robert M. Thomas, I live at 2216 Southwest Bard Road here in Lincoln City. I've lived here since 1989. There's been a lot of give and take about improvements on Bard Road over the years. I got involved with trying to improve the properties, spent a lot of money about 15 years ago. Kind of anticipated public utilities. It didn't turn out that way. I came to the conclusion that, that I was on the wrong track anyway. The property doesn't need to be divided into lots. I had it kind of visualizing modular homes, but it doesn't make, looking at the situation now with a public park at the end of the street. City invested, committed themselves on that. The way the land lays and everything, it's zone multi-unit dwelling. And it'd make more sense for the future of the property to go, with multi-unit dwelling, to go into maybe lower income housing development. Jim Drayton owns a big section of property, as you come up from Highway 101 at an angle there, just right at the end of the blacktop. I'm down about halfway between where he is in the park area, and I have 300 feet. And also, there's a lot of foot traffic lately, you know, like in the summer, spring, it's getting heavier, and I know the city's aware of that. People are kind of walking on my property to a degree, to as far as it's becoming kind of a safety and a, and a health, you know, a kind of, it needs to be, could be cleaner in this safety situation, maybe in the future, without, without utilities on that, on that street. The reason why I bought the property in the first place was that I liked the location, I'm self-employed, it's easy for me to get to Newport and north end of town and everything, and it makes a lot of sense to have multi-unit dwelling there to maximize the situation for, even for the city. There's a lot of people that can't afford first-class housing, vacation rentals and all this stuff costs all kinds of money and everything. So if it was the right, it was the right situation for the city, indirectly maybe the city would benefit from, you know, regular, regular tenants, you know, that, less, less per month. Close the factory, stores, less swab, the bank, one thing or another, people can walk, maybe even a wheelchair, you can get down there and back, you know, that part of it. And then for the park, the park is a new addition, that's an improvement. So I'm, I'm saying that it's with Olivia Beach expanding again after about 10 years, there's a new expansion of Olivia Beach on top of the hill, between where I live and the, and Coast Avenue on the, on the west side. It's, it's developing also another, another subdivision there, and with the zoning. There's also several unimprovement parcels that would probably be developed. The atmosphere of that street is kind of poor, things are kind of dirty along there, people haven't power washed there. I haven't, I haven't done anything to my property for several years, it's, it's got a lot of mold on the concrete and everybody, everybody kind of needs painting up and down the street or one thing or another. I mean, there's kind of lack, like they've lost kind of interest to a degree in their property. People know that the city isn't paying that much attention to Bard Road for the last 10 years, and they're aware of it, we even mentioned it, my neighbors. As far as, as far as the future is concerned, I'd expect miracles, it looks like a plan for the, for the area, you know, a positive plan of, I know it's expensive, but it doesn't have to happen in one year. The city, the city allowed me to hook on to, to Highway 101. I have a cleanout at the bottom of my hill, two-thirds of my property goes downhill, right next to the Ripley Believe It or Not sign, and that, and that lower property has just become, gone up for sale in the last 30 days or so. It's been, it used to be a lot of trucks and everything down there by the sign, all of a sudden there's a for sale sign on it, I don't even, I haven't contacted the owner or anything. I'm about, I go down and I'm about 20 feet on the level down there from the, from the back, from the hillside out to the street, it's only some other party. But anyway, it's, that's kind of where I am with it, so I'm limited, limited on top of the hill, and that's why it needs, area-wise, it's, that's level to meet, to meet code and everything, apartment situation in the future. I've even talked to Stephanie at length about it, and she agrees with me too, that the financing and one thing or another, the city backed off by the way down there on the, on capping off by the highway, they gave me a, they gave me a cleanout. And then, and then later on, last year, the city decided they didn't want to, I give, I was gonna give them a free access down the side of my property, just to, you know, cut down on the expense. They decided they'd rather have a manhole or something out on Bard Road and go, the pumping, you know, the existing septic tanks, regardless of the condition they're in, for the, for the street, have a pumping situation, you know, up to the street. They've, they've already kind of went in that direction, but they did initially give me cap off a pipe on the highway, I can show you pretty much where it is, you know, where one of the manholes is, down by Ripley's sign. So I'm just, I'm just asking for, for consideration about the future of the, of the street. I think, I think with, like I mentioned, the dirt, the safety, the grader, grader used to, they grade my street about two or three times around in front of my house, and used to, when they graded the streets about five years ago, the grading would last like a two or three months. Well, this time they graded the street and the holes were back 30 days later, you know, I mean, you're, you know, you're hitting holes, you know, and I, I go, I'm usually, I travel as much on the wrong side of the street as on the right side, you might say, to get, to get to my house every day, you know, and, and they just graded the street a month ago.
All right, thank you, Robert.
So that's where, that's where I am with the whole thing.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
And then Ron, I don't know, we need to get into complete discussion about it, but are you kind of up to speed on what Robert's talking about?
I am, as far as the, his request, and it's one that Lila and I've had discussions about, and there are some policy questions that were associated with that, and we'll be prepared to bring that back for you guys to have further discussion on.
All right, great, thank you so much. No one else has signed up, John, you're next on the, on the presentation, so anyone who did not sign up, wish to speak? Okay. Well then, we're to our presentation, a presentation request from the Episcopal parish of St. John Santiago, St. James Santiago, sorry, that's you, Mr. Skipper. Did you need a screen or anything like that, or? Do you need a screen or anything, you're just talking to us? Okay.
I'm John Skipper, I live in Lincoln City, and I'm a member of the Board of St. James Episcopal Church. I have some other board members with me here this evening. We're going to make another attempt at getting approval from the city for a land exchange. We've been through this process once before for a long, long time. So, but we need to start over again, actually. I've been working with Ron Chandler for, seems like years and years, but for at least a couple of years. We've worked out a lot of details that are already agreed on by the city council and the prior process that we went through. And so we're starting, essentially starting over. St. James is located at the upper end of, this is for the new members of the council, at the upper end of Northeast 25th Street, and it's served by a short, about 100-foot-long city street that was somehow deeded to the city when our church was built back in the 60s. We, it has served us well, but now we want to replace our sign with, that designates where our church is located. Our churches, our property starts about 100 feet off of 101 right-of-way, and that is not visible from Highway 101, so we, and we've had a sign there alongside the highway, actually located in Northeast 25th Street. We didn't realize that for a long time until we got into this project, but it is in the southwest corner of the right-of-way, partly in the 101 right-of-way, and the rest of it is in the right-of-way of Northeast 25th Street. So what we're requesting is that an exchange of values that will end up with us owning our driveway, as I call it. As it stands, ODOT will not let us put a new sign up. It's, since it's located on city property partly and Highway 101, it's classified in the ODOT system as an outdoor advertising sign. And that, that means that we can't put a new sign up under ODOT regulations. So I came to Ron Chandler, gosh, it seems like three or four years ago now regarding that, and so we've been working on that for quite a while. We worked out some exchanges of values that would end up with the, with St. James owning that 50 by 100-foot strip, and then the, and in exchange, the, the city owns about a 1.84 acre parcel up to, on the north side of our property, with an overlap of about 10 feet on the, on our property side.
John?
So.
John, let me jump in here real quick. In your packet, four pages from the back, if you look at this map, it will help you as he's referring to these pieces of property.
Thanks, Ron.
So we've, we've worked out some exchanges of values that will come out where we and the city will be approximately equal in value at the end of this proposed transaction. So the, we, we will grant an additional easement of 75 feet at the top of our driveway for more of an access to the city-owned property there, which is zoned residential multifamily, and at some future date, someone may want to construct some affordable housing there. And according to an estimate that I've gotten from the planning department, that would accommodate probably 30 to 35 units of housing there, including parking and circulation and so forth. But that's just our estimate. Excuse me. The, so there's, there's a couple of items that we are giving to the city, that is an easement over 75 feet of our property at the top of our driveway. And another triangular easement, as you'll see on that map, that is at the northeast corner of our property, so that that would provide better access to the city-owned property for some future development. So what our proposal is, is to erect a new sign at the, at the foot of our driveway, own our property, if this process is completed satisfactorily. And we are contemplating putting on, on that property, a electronic sign similar to the sign in front of the cultural center, so that we can have changes of messages and that sort of thing from inside the church. And so that'll work out very well. Now, the, our original proposal was changed to a proposal that the council found unacceptable, sort of in the last process. So we're, we're reopening that, if, it's your pleasure to begin the process again, and with all the work that's been done on it, the appraisals of these values have already been done. So I think we can make a shorter project out of this on the second run. So that's short, sort of the short version of the story, and would anyone have any questions?
Please.
So are we back to where we were last year, before your, your last seminar?
We're, we're, we're starting over with a lot of work behind us. The appraisals of these values have already been done, so we don't have to go into that at this point. So we're, we're returning to the original proposal that was almost ready for final approval by the council.
Mr. Ryan here, now, this was a question that John and I actually discussed today to make sure we both were, and had the same understanding of what the original proposal was, and by the way, it's been a very nice 25 years we've been working together.
Thank you, sir. The pleasure is mutual.
It has been a pleasure working with John. So if you, if you go to this map, okay, the, we had been discussing and had the appraisals done on four sections of property. The yellow section that's highlighted is the city's property, and that had an appraisal of $4,800. The green section that attaches to that is 3,750 square feet, and it had an appraisal of $1,900. The little triangular piece up on the corner has an appraisal of $700, and then the red square piece down at the bottom had an appraisal of $5,000. We were working towards each of those, or discussing each of those, and the proposal that we were at before it kind of just sank and all fell apart, was that the city would exchange the yellow parcel in exchange for the, the rectangular piece of 3,750 square feet, the triangular piece, and then the difference made up in cash, which would be $2,200, plus the cost of the appraisal fee, which was $1,200. So that, that was the original proposal, that's where we left off after a lot of discussion to get to that proposal before you.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I, I guess I'm not clear on that. So back on November 28th, we were at, the city gives the 4,000 some odd square parcel that's 25th Street to the church in fee title, and then the city gets two easements, the rectangular one that's adjacent and the triangle on the corner, and then fee title to the 5,000 square foot piece down in the corner. So you're saying that 5,000 square feet isn't in there?
Yeah, there was one step that, that you're missing in that conversation. If you recall, I had brought back and said there was an interest in some change, the change was, instead of, instead of getting fee title to that red rectangular piece, we would receive cash instead. The city council never had a chance to act on that because by the time we got to our December meeting, the, the request by the church had changed, and that's when it ended. So we never did get to that final discussion point. Now, as I understand the process that we'll have to go through, Mr. Apicello can go into more detail on this, that we would need to hold public hearings again, based on this, and, and and then be able to proceed if you're interested.
Now, I think my only question, I'd ask Mr. Chandler this, I'll ask you, John, is what assurances do we have that we're not gonna have another change?
We have my personal guarantee, sir.
Because it was a very last minute, and it was a great concern to the council, that the work had been put in, and then all of a sudden.
Yeah.
It's over, and I just, I am personally not interested in going forward if, if I feel in any way that we're just gonna be spinning on our wheels again. I want to go forward, but I just want to make sure that your board understands this was still happening.
And we, we have discussed this thoroughly in our board, and we're returning to the original plan that was almost approved. Now, one, one question though, Ron, is, or Mr. Chandler, I should say.
John, when you turn, you gotta keep the mic kind of close to you while you talk to him there.
All right, okay. The last discussion you and I had regarding that red rectangular piece, that I recall anyway, in the, that would be in the southeast corner of our property, is that that would not be included in the transaction.
That was the, that was the final offer that, that you had prepared, but the city council had never had a chance to actually consider that because your, then your letter came in that said, with a completely different offer. So they have not had the opportunity to, to deliberate on that specifically.
Now, I understand, yes, your point. The, there, there's some issues there, I think we've got the values okay for, to satisfy the city's requirements for this exchange of property interests. That, that 50 by 100 parcel is, as we used to say down south, steeper than a cow's face, it's probably at least a 45-degree angle, and it is, it may or may not be encroaching on the property that we have leased to a cell tower company, where we have that big cell tower there on our property. So those are some considerations that.
That's actually the items that these good folks should be considering as they, as they look to not include that in the property. As they look to, on whether or not to include that in the discussion.
Okay, so that's still an open.
Really for them to consider.
Yeah, that's still an open question then, okay. All right, any other questions?
Actually, it's from Mr. Apicello. Mr. Apicello, would there be any new expenses to the city to just pick up where we left off?
Well, we've concluded the vacation proceeding, we've concluded the land exchange proceeding. You've made final decisions, in one case you decided not to proceed with an ordinance, in another you denied the proposed land exchange. So yes, on the street vacation, remember, this endeavor requires two separate processes. First, we have to process a street vacation to vacate the public's interest in 25th Street. Because of the fact that the city owns the property in fee, the street vacation process will result in the, the public's interest being removed, so once the public interest, public's interest in 25th Street is removed, the city can then engage in a land exchange with the church, which is an advertised public hearing. And a street vacation is also an advertised public hearing. The proposal, as I'm hearing it today, is for a, the city conveys fee title to 4,775 square feet in exchange for about 5,092 square feet of easements. So fee title, city gives up and gets in, in exchange easements of approximately the same area, leaving out that 5,000 square foot parcel in the corner. The reason why I asked about that is because we had actually written a staff report and findings concerning the 5,000 square foot parcel and the two easements in exchange for the right-of-way. We haven't written a staff report for. We haven't written a staff report for the modification that Ron referenced because that actually got modified again before we actually got to talk about it. So, yes, there will be additional expense. There's also the issue of who initiates the application for the street vacation. In the past, the city council initiated the street vacation, and for two reasons probably. The one, the less important reason is that there's an $800 application fee. Probably the more important reason is that a privately initiated street vacation requires the consent of the adjoining abutting property owners. And so you don't have a complete application to consider if you have them initiate it. They have to pay $800 and get the consent of the adjoining property owners, and there's also a formula about surrounding properties that are affected, and two-thirds of those have to agree as well. So if the city initiates it, you're kind of giving up that $800 application fee, but you're saving the applicant, the church in this case, the expense and time of going around and asking for the written consent of those adjoining property owners, as well as a percentage of the others that are affected. So, yes, there's considerable staff time involved and some advertising. We'll have to have public hearing on both the street vacation and on the land exchange. The land exchange must advertise the proposed deal. And try to, now, last time what we did was we provided for some flexibility in the advertisement, so we're allowed a little bit for modifications. Unfortunately, that kind of worked against us because it got modified too much, and we weren't able to make the findings in the end that had furthered the public interest.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
The presentation is just there wanting to start? That's all that we're doing, correct? Just so I'm clear, is the purpose of this presentation is just to say, hey, we would like to do this again? Kind of go back to the, yeah, you kind of have to go back to what we were talking about before. We were like that close to saying yes, and then the board had a change. And so I think that's, we're right back to that point of where we were going to go forward.
With the exception of that.
With the exception, right, right.
Right, right. So he, the applicant is trying to fill us out if we would want to do this again?
Well, I don't know if we're being asked to make a decision right now because we're going to have a public hearing.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, the one bit of information that we would need from you is, if you're interested, is to go forward. Absent a going forward from you, the staff would not continue to work on this.
Right, but that's, now is not the time for that.
Well, but actually now, or sometime after now, the question for you is, do you wish to initiate a street vacation? So like you did last time, you initiated the street vacation, saving them the $800 and saving them having to go around and get consent from adjacent property owners.
I don't mean to be splitting hairs, but that would come after we have the public comment period, right?
No.
We do that before we have public comment?
Oh, yeah, we have to start, it's like filing an application. You first have to, he could start it by filing an application.
Okay.
If he doesn't file an app, but when to file an application, he has to pay $800 and have the consent of all the adjoining owners and a percentage of those other people affected for the street vacation. That's a prerequisite to the land exchange.
Okay, so just help me out, within the construct of a public hearing, we've got to receive public comment regarding exemption for competitive, wait a minute, I just skipped over that. Presentation and request, okay, so we're not, I had a public hearing for them yet.
Yeah.
Got it, that's the next one. All right, that's where I screwed up. I am ahead of myself. Never mind, John, just move on.
Do you want to do it? And I guess I disagree a little bit on what was, because I wrote the findings and I wrote the staff report. What was before you that was basically tentatively approved, subject to doing the final written part, was the exchange of the 25th Street right-of-way, about almost 5,000 square feet in fee, for two easements and the fee title of 5,000 square feet of property. So that's where you were. You never actually discussed fee title for 25th Street and two easements. You never had that discussion. You had a discussion on fee title for 25th, two easements, and the 5,000 square foot parcel. So that's where you were.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Skipper? Thank you, John. I said, "Thank you." Nobody's got any more questions for you?
I think we have a question.
Oh, good, right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's for John. I just want to make sure that the city property isn't landlocked. If this church owns that first part, that first 100 feet, how do we get to our easement?
The street vacation had a condition that we would give easements to all utilities and to all adjoining owners, including the city. So we would reserve basically easements to access our own property.
Okay, good, all right.
Yeah, right.
That easement didn't do us any good if we didn't have access across the other part.
Yeah. You don't have much of an access right now, and there's just a 10-foot notch in the, what would be the southwest corner of that city-owned property.
Right.
Where the, the street ends right there. So that's why we have the additional easement going to the city for much more adequate access to that property for any future development that might occur.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I was trying to remember where we left this. I think we had a long discussion as it dropped away about the cost of the appraisal and where we left holding the bag of the appraisals. Even you raised that. And I think from that, so that would be one question I have. Have we been reimbursed? And then what I think I am hearing is that really the question for us, are we going to initiate or let, as normally would happen, the applicant would initiate the vacation, and that would start the process, public hearings and everything else. So we may be able to use some data, like the appraisals, but everything else would be a start over? Is that your understanding, Mayor? I mean, it's a different council. They haven't heard testimony.
Yeah, I guess that would be, I would have to ask where we at with the fees that were due, and are we, Ron, can you help me out with that?
Yeah, I don't believe we have received those yet.
But that's still part of the plan.
That would be part of the plan, yes, sir.
Well, see, now, if I can not to, but sitting here in April, and I'm trying to remember, that was December that the deal died. So I don't know if we went after appraisal or asked for our reimbursement of appraisal costs or not, but I'm a little hard pressed to be sitting in April being asked to, you know, have faith kind of stuff. And I don't want to be a hard guy, but, you know, I think we've learned our lesson not to initiate, you know. That was a heavy discussion in December.
We have not sent them a bill.
Okay, so that helps, you know. And I think the appraisal is still good, but these are, these would be things that I'm thinking about as I'm being asked to look back in time and do a do-over.
But if we haven't sent
Right.
An invoice, we can't expect fee payment.
Exactly, so that's helpful.
Mr. Chairman, this is, you're addressing a question that I had in preparing this updated material here, three new members on the council for openers, and then the fact that it has been several months since this proposal died, the original proposal. So I took the material from the original proposal, added some features to it, and so that's for the benefit of memories and new members of the council.
And, thank you, John. I understand that. My point being, you know, the new council hasn't heard public testimony, public hearings, all the, it's a start-over process, as far as I'm concerned. And so the real question at hand is, you know, do you want to initiate the application? You know, feel free would be, I don't know if that's what you're just informing us and waiting to go tomorrow and file, or are you really asking us to initiate the process?
My understanding from our board is that we are absolutely sincere in this request at this point.
No, I hear you. It's about as much as of a guarantee as that I can give you.
Counselor, in fairness to them, they did not discuss with me the initiation process. So what they're hearing from you on whether or not we initiated or they initiated now at this point is new. I did not have that discussion with them.
So help me out then. You're looking tonight for us to kind of nod our head and say, yeah, we'll talk to you later, or?
No, there's really a couple of questions that are before you. The first one is, do you want to go forward? If you do nothing, the city staff won't take any action. If you do want to go forward, then the question is, do you want to initiate that process? And that we would need you to instruct us, and I would say instruct us through a vote to initiate the process. If you do, if you do nothing, or you don't do that, then the option that the church would have would be to initiate this process by filing an application and getting the requisite signatures that are necessary to do that. So the real question before you is, do you want to go forward? And if you do, do you want to initiate the process? Now, like I said, in fairness to them, I did not discuss that with them, so, you know, that's coming cold to them on that. But that's the two, that's the question for you. The first one is, do you want to go forward? The second question, if you answer yes, is, do you want to initiate the process?
Is there any question?
Yes, because, yeah, I'm just trying to formulate it. Do you two need time to talk about the difference between initiation instead of like right now?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, "Do you and Mr. Chandler need a chance to talk about whether, who initiates it and what it means, rather than us just moving forward with?"
Are you in a position to say what you want?
Or is that a board decision? I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be beneficial for you to know exactly what that means, and if your board is behind whichever way it goes.
I think that's a very good suggestion that we, we've been working on this project for several years now, and a little more time, and maybe until the next meeting or as soon as we can get a handle on these costs and this change of plans that Mr. Appicello was talking about, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, so you guys are going to set up a meeting then, and?
I will set that up.
You don't need anything from us tonight?
No, we don't.
Did you have a question, Mr.?
Yes. I don't know what you guys came to, but the minimum criteria for eligibility for real property exchange, Oregon Revised Statute 271.310, is that, the minimum criteria is that the public, I'm sorry, the public interest may be furthered. So before we go anything else, does it meet the minimum criteria of this exchange? So before we talk about all of that, will our interest in giving up that street and the possibility to do more with our city-owned land, to continue 25th Street, to possibly connect to Northeast 27 or Northeast Surf and all that land, will that further our benefit, further the city's, the public's interest? Right? Am I understanding that clearly?
That is, you are correct in the sense that 271 requires either a finding that the property is not necessary for public use, or the public interest will be furthered. Now, if you look at the staff report from November of 2016, and you look at the earlier staff report on the street vacation, I think that was in July of 2016, you'll see all those applicable statutes addressed in the findings in the post-staff report. But that's, you don't make the decision when you decide to initiate. When you decide to initiate, you're just saying, okay, we'll process the application and after the public hearing, after we've heard all the evidence, then we'll decide whether or not the finding furthering the public interest is met.
Okay, so that the time of?
After the hearing, you ask, has the public, will the public interest be furthered now that we have all the evidence?
Okay, so you're good with that? You two get together and come back to us?
It's a start, I think.
Okay.
And I'll get with Mr. Chandler, and we can proceed with the, getting into these other matters.
All right, thank you, John, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Mr. Appicello, you were going to jump in here on the public hearing, because I don't have a script with me. You said you could help out.
Yes, Your Honor, there was an advertisement for this public hearing, which is about a alternative contracting method for a public improvement contract. Unfortunately, we were short on the number of days the ad was in before this hearing. So in order to fix that, I'd like to ask that you continue this hearing to the May 8th city council meeting, so that anyone who needs more time will have the amount of time, more than the amount of time required by the statute. And I'll talk to staff about possibly doing a re-ad，则tisment indicating that we've continued the hearing. However, you might want to ask if anyone is here to speak, because I'd hate for someone that couldn't make it back on the 8th to be here. So I ask that you open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here, and if no one's here to talk about it, I'd ask you immediately continue it to May 8th, and we'll have the hearing then.
Okay, but if we open the public hearing, do I have to read that whole spiel? Because I don't have that spiel in front of me.
Well, this isn't a land use hearing, so it's, this is basically just a public input on a public contracting exemption.
Okay, I just want to make sure the i's are dotted and t's crossed here, so. Okay, so, all right, let's see if we can just wing this. We're going to open the?
Can I, will we make a motion?
Well, I think he can open the public hearing.
Yeah, we're just, we're going to open a public hearing on the, to receive public comment regarding the exemption of the competitive bidding process proposed for the Scuna Creek Sanitary Sewer Boring Project. So if anyone was here to speak on that matter, is now is the time. Seeing none, now a motion to close?
No, actually, leave the hearing open.
Leave the hearing open, thank you.
Just continue the hearing to May 8th.
Okay, say that again.
Continue the public hearing to May 8th, 2017.
I move to continue this public hearing to May 8th, 2017, 6 o'clock, this location. Second?
You got the second, Kathy? Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. That's all I should do on that?
Yes.
Okay, real good. Ordinance is none, resolution is none, special, special order of business, construction contract award Northeast Tide Avenue and 31st Street overlay project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a construction contract award for Northeast Tide Avenue and 31st Street, which is a street that's off of Northeast Holmes Road. And it's a, it's a really nice, nice project going to improve that neighborhood quite a bit. And so it was funded in the 2016-17 budget, and the project will include edge grinding and an overlay of two inches of asphalt, and we'll be improving some curb ramps, ADA curb ramps. And so it'll end at the end of northeast, south Northeast Tide Avenue. And we advertised the project on March 22nd, 2017. Bids were open on the 13th, and we received one bid from Road and Driveway of Newport. It was $84,205.75. And the funding sources are Street Capital Replacement Fund 252. And so we have a list of the other, it was an in-house design, and we did some surveying, and mainly we do, we do the surveying for ADA. and mainly we do, we do the surveying for ADA reasons. So there's some, you know, it was built a long time ago, and so there's some improvements in the sidewalk we have to make there. And our advertisement cost was $488.21, and our Bureau of Labor and Industries was $250. And so we have the construction bid, and then we also have art, percent for art, the one and a half, one half of 1% is $421.3. And then we have a construction contingency of $7,449. So our recommendation is to award to Road and Driveway. They were really close to our engineer's estimate on this project. And, and the amount of $84,205.75, with the contingency of $8,420.58, for a total amount of $92,626.33.
Yes, you're going to have to speak up. I don't know if it's my ear, but I'm barely hearing you.
You mentioned that this was close to the engineer's estimate, but we didn't get the engineer's estimate.
The engineer's estimate was $86,173.50, and the bid was $84,205.75.
So it seems like a reasonable bid?
Yes, yes. The price per ton, we always bid at a little bit higher price per ton. We estimate 110, and it came in at 86, actually.
That made the difference.
Yeah, you just never know what the oil prices are going to be.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
Are you going to do more? Is it possible with these bids like that to have the engineer's estimate on all of those, or, Mr. Chandler? Is that something that we could just have as information and part of it?
We can do that.
Just so we, I mean, I was going to ask the exact same thing.
Counsel, Casper.
Could you refresh my memory on the one half of 1% for art?
That, for any of our capital projects in our ordinances, we put that toward, that's what is the budget for the arts board. And so that money goes to projects that will probably come up in their master plan, that their, the Arts Committee is doing a master plan right now.
Okay.
And so that money goes into a pot, I think there's approximately $27,000 in there. Most of it comes from water and sewer, large capital projects.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, Lila, is that engineer's bid, is that shared with our bidders beforehand?
No.
Okay. And just a quick question, any thoughts as to why there's only one bidder on this project?
Well, we really only have one large paving company, and so someone from the valley would end up coming to do the, do the project. And usually they'll bid, if you, if we were trying to put them all out together, you get more interest from someone from the valley. But their, their prices are in line with all of those types of bids from past projects.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not?
Yeah, Road and Driveway's our only large paving company, and they're in Newport.
Okay.
And so our, our local bidders, you know, Get Us Paving is one of our locals, and, you know, they have the opportunity to bid on it if they want to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're not, I don't ever want to have a reputation that you don't want to work for Lincoln City, so.
Right. Now, Road and Driveway, they're going to be doing Northwest 50th Street real soon, and so they, they were the low bidder on that job. I think we had three bids on that one.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the bid amount for Road and Driveway for the total amount of $92,325.78.
Actually, that, on the recommendation, that's the very last number. It's the $92,626.33. The other number had items that we had already?
I meant my motion to be $92,626.33.
Second.
Does that can be a satisfactory motion without mentioning the street address and all that? Normally, we say the tide project doesn't matter.
The name of the contract probably is, usually includes the street name.
Yeah. May I? For the Northeast Tide and 31st Street.
Recend your second.
Yes.
Okay, so then I would like to rescind my original motion, redo my motion to award the contract, the construction contract to Road and Driveway for the Northeast Tide Avenue and 31st Street overlay for the total amount of $92,626.33.
Perfect.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hovland?
Yep.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Wolke?
Yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you so much. All right, on to appointment to Arts Committee, four vacancies, two application, or two applicants for city resident terms expiring 12/31/2019 and 12/31/2018. I have Roxy Stavney and Alan Larry Stevens.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hinton and I both did the interviews for the Public Arts and interviewed both the, those individuals. Even though we did it together, our deliberations were, and recommendations are separate. And, but actually, both of us recommending both these individuals for the Public Arts Any questions? If not, make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion to second, discussion?
Two, yeah. We have four applications, four?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess we're, we need to, we need each person. We can't do them both at the same time, or is that correct? We have to do one for?
You, actually, you can do them both, but you need to specify which person has the, the actual?
Oh, which term, right.
Which term goes to which person?
Yeah, yeah. Who's got the 19, who's got the 18?
I'd take them in order.
Okay.
So the 19 would go to Roxy, and 18 to Larry.
Motion is to appoint Roxy Stavney to the term expiring 12/31/2019. Okay.
Second.
Okay, so second that. Any discussion? Oh, and then, I'm sorry, so that wouldn't, then of course be, Alan Larry Stevens would have the term expiring 12/31/2018. Okay, so, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you both for applying, and welcome aboard. Appointment to the Library Board, two vacancies, two applicants for city resident positions with terms expiring 6/30/2020 and 6/30/2019, Sheldon MacArthur and Sammy Daniels. Who did that?
Former Counselor Norikus and I interviewed Mr. MacArthur, and Counselor, excuse me. Casper and I interviewed Ms. Daniels, and I think they're both good applicants for the Library Board.
Would you make a motion for which positions you're going to do in order? Does Mr. MacArthur get the 2020, or who gets what?
I move to appoint Sammy Daniels to the term expiring 6/30/20, and Mr. MacArthur to the term expiring 6/30/19.
Second anybody?
I second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. All right, motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you both very much for applying. Look forward to hearing from you. All right, appointments to Park Boards, two vacancies, one applicant for a city resident term expiring 12/31/2019, Jill Smith. Who had that one?
Did any?
Help us out, Kathy. Was that me?
I believe it was you and Counselor Wolke, but I'm not positive.
Oh, I believe.
It was a while ago, yeah.
Yeah, I believe we did.
Last December.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to go ahead?
No, go ahead, please. Are you, your voice okay? You all right?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Mayor Williams and I interviewed Ms. Smith quite a while ago, and I would recommend that she be appointed.
Any discussion?
May I have a, ask a question?
Yes.
Why is there, is there a reason for the time lag between the time that you interviewed and the time that we're making the appointment?
Yes, we had another applicant, and I thought it fair that if we could get the issues worked out with the other applicant, I wanted them both to go on at the same time, but I didn't receive a response from the other applicant. So I held it as long as I could.
Thank you for allowing that person to, to respond. So I move to appoint Jill Smith to the vacancy on the Parks Board, which expires 12/31/19.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Welcome aboard, Ms. Smith. Thank you so much for your patience. Assigning positions, terms for new Budget Committee members.
This was action you, yeah, this was action you took on, two weeks ago on the appointment of these three individuals, but you didn't assign them to the, when their expiration date is. So you have one expiration date that will be December 31st, 2017, and two that have expiration dates of, on December 31st, 2019. And the three individuals that you have, that you appointed were Amanda Cherry Holmes, Kevin Honboun, and Chester Norikus. And so we need you to assign them to the terms.
Can you give me the 2017 date again?
December 31st, 2017.
12/31, okay. And 12/31/19?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to figure out who, who's going to do what. Well, you know what? We have one, one of those people out here right now. Mr. Norikus, would you be, you interested in the 17 or the 19?
I'd like the 17. What do you have?
Okay, so Chester would like the 19. Okay, so, and we had two, two for that one, right? And one for the 17. Okay, so then it's one and one. Well, let's just?
I move to appoint Amanda Cherry Holmes to the position expiring 12/31/17, and Chester Norikus and Kevin Honboun to the partial terms expiring 12/31/19.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all very much for applying and your service. All right.
Your Honor, I'd say one more thing about?
Please.
I, we still have a vacancy for a high school student on the Library Board. I believe we still have two vacancies on the Arts Committee, four vacancies on the Sustainability Committee, three vacancies on the Transient Room Tax Committee, and two vacancies on the Visitor and Convention Committee. So I invite people to apply and become involved.
All right, thank you. And, okay, council priorities.
On your April 3rd work meeting, you had discussed priorities that you began with a memo that I gave to you outlining some of the priorities that I was able to take from our work meetings. And then during that discussion, you had several other things that each of the council members brought up. I have included in my work meeting, and the staff report for the work meeting and the minutes, and if you are prepared to give us some direction as to what you want to focus in on the priorities, we'll be ready to hear it. I should point out that this by no means means everything the city does. It's really where I will devote my time to, to go forward with these projects, but there's many, many more things that the city does and will continue to do. So that's where we're left off. There's, you can move forward with this tonight, or you can wait and do it at a later time. Some of these items are, are being dealt with in the budget, and will either become part of the budget or fall off based upon the decision of the Budget Committee and eventually the City Council.
I think the other thing, just, sorry, it didn't occur to me until now. The question I have is, in economic development, if, say someone says, gosh, it would be great if we had X business here, who do we go to within the city that would reach out to that business and say, hey, you know, have you considered Lincoln City?
That is, that is one of the assignments that we are putting into the urban renewal. If you recall, in our budget, we've taken about 25 to 30% of the budget and put it in what we're calling economic development. And so I have assigned our urban renewal team to head up the team, and it's not just them. Whenever you're looking at that kind of an economic development, it's a collaborative effort of bringing a lot of people together, but it would be Allison Robertson who would be the one to coordinate that.
And as far as her team, what, who's that?
Well, depends on what it is, but when you look at?
So you should be free to assemble that?
Oh, yes. And so it would be staff, it would most definitely be at least one member of the City Council. It would be utility companies that you would bring in. It just depends on the kind of business that you will bring in to be able to answer their questions.
Okay, great. Any thoughts, direction?
Yes. In my, in my opinion, the economic development is the VCB. A lot of the stuff that they do is what the VCB can do. And so creating a separate fund and all this is, it seems like a double, a double bag of money to be able to do the same things from two different areas. I think some of the stuff that they can do falls right into the VCB and using the TRT money to fund these same, similar things. And so I'm a bit confused at the whole economic development creation.
Ron, maybe you could talk to how TRT money can be used?
The, the VCB is primarily a marketing arm of the city and an events creation, creator. They do not and have not done your more traditional business attraction and expansion and retention activities. So when we're talking economic development, we certainly are talking in part with the VCB, but this would expand it to go and look at the idea of attracting businesses or helping businesses to expand or retaining businesses in the community.
I think I was looking for more what they can do by charter.
No, okay, as far as, as far as the TRT funds go, that is limited by the charter to tourism type of activities, and police, facilities, parks, and streets. And so the, the efforts that I'm looking at don't really fall in under, under the, under any of those categories.
If I might?
Are you still going?
Are you still?
Yeah, I was going to bring up, now that we're on TRT, I don't remember if it was a council meeting or a budget meeting, but you said you were approached by the League of Oregon Cities about loosening or changing what the money would be, and I remember you saying you weren't interested in that. And I was wondering, is that something that was a definite decision to not be brought to council? Or is that something that you, as the city manager, they only want your input? Or, or what process is going to come after you saying, no, I like it the way it is?
The, the portion of the TRT money that they're talking about is the percent and a half, not the 8%. So we get, we have two sections that pertain to, of the nine and a half percent that we charge for the lodging tax. Both are dictated by the charter. Now, the percent and a half is also dictated by the state law, and it restricts it to tourism, marketing, and our language is very similar to that for that percent and a half. What they are interested in doing, what the state has been looking at is loosening that up so that it can be spent on other things like we're spending on the, with the other 8%. Police. Police, facilities, um, streets, parks, and so forth. When this came to me for a discussion, it came into a call asking if the city was interested in testifying towards this. And when I explained to them the, uh, how our, how our distribution of the money works, and it's also spelled out by the Charter, and then that's how those funds are going, they determined that we were probably not the best fitted for this, for their testimony to the, to the committee.
Um, just to jump back before we went to that, about what the VCB can do, and you were talking about marketing, so the second, the second, under the strategies, the second one is called marketing under economic development. So how does that differ from the VCB?
Well, when I'm looking at economic development, our economic development has been VCB, and it will continue to be as, one part of it. But this, um, but this discussion of economic development is not solely about the VCB, nor is it about business retention and attraction. It's about both. And that's why you see some things, such as number two, marketing, which is a VCB activity. And then you have business development that is generally not a VCB activity. I did not, I did not segregate those into one being more important than the other.
So what you have here is a category of type of work, but not who performs it, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Or where the budget comes from?
That's correct.
Okay.
Counsel Hogen, did you still have more?
Uh, yeah, but I, we can, I can, we're, we're in council thoughts and...
This is just a wide open discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm, I have lots of stuff, but we can...
Okay. Was there any, this end?
I can, nobody else does, I'll keep going.
Well, I guess you're looking for, once again, Ron, you want to say, this is, you want us to say, this is where we want you to go? You, by motion, and well, accept this and start?
No, this is not, no, I wouldn't say it that way.
Okay. Tell me how you want it said.
Where do you want to go? This isn't, I want you to tell me where you go. This, these are your priorities. If you're ready to, if you're ready to discuss those tonight, great. If you want more time, great. If you don't even want to do them at all, that's fine. The, the question that was posed in discussions earlier is, what are the priorities of the City Council? And so ultimately, it's where you want to go and when you want to decide where to go.
Well, for me, I, I'm comfortable with what you've laid out. We, we're not agreeing to pay for a single thing here yet. We're just giving you the direction to go forward. I'm, I'm comfortable with everything here. Nothing is throwing up a red flag to me. And if it, if it moves things forward, I would, I'd be in favor of that.
I might point out that there may be some wisdom in waiting. If you look on the, if you look on the third page that discusses police, one of the strategy is community outreach, and I listed two things, the police academy and the police cadet program. I know during the budget, there was some question on whether, you had some questions on the costs associated with that. Some of these things will most definitely be flushed out in the budget. So, same thing I just said, though, there's nothing tied to it, there's no monies, there's no problem with going ahead, discussing these things. So I'm, again, I'm still, not as... And the other part is, is that priorities are fluid. There's no way you can anticipate what's going to happen by the December this year, and so...
Get moving.
They're fluid.
Counsel Hogen, did you have something?
I mean, I, and the same thing. I can talk about it now, or I can talk about it later. I can talk about it at the next council meeting. I can talk about, about it at the Budget Committee. I mean, there's, there's plenty of time to talk about the things. And if there's no cost associated with saying, "Yes, sure, go ahead with these things," then that's fine with his, with our council priorities.
I just had a couple of comments, generally speaking. One is that I think, it's too late now, but I think that we should have established our priorities before we did the budget, because the budget should reflect our goals and aspirations and, and that before we get into where the, where the dollars are going to fit into which categories. But we're too late for that. Maybe next year we can get a jump on it.
That's very difficult to do with a first-time council, because, quite frankly, we actually start the budget in November. So it's very difficult when, when you've got so many new council members coming fresh. If there are things that are not reflected that you wish there were, and you're, after the budget's passed and everything else, I can guarantee you by the time we get to the next budget, those things will be flushed out. So it is a little bit difficult, but if, but even in that, as you go through the budget process, there is nothing to prevent you from, as part of the Budget Committee members or as part of the City Council, from adding or taking away from the budget.
I, I, I see where Counsel Hinton is going with this, and I have to kind of agree. It, it touches on a couple of things we've talked about, things like evaluations and, and other issues that, you know, are sort of time-sensitive, but it would be sure would be nice to have it on our calendar that says, "We're going to talk about this well before this time," and, and so we can begin, so even if we don't have new counselors, you know, if I'm here and two other people are here, we should be getting that information, new counselors or not.
And I, if I may, I object to being called a new counselor and not being able to do the duties that I have been elected to do. I seriously object to this. And because I think that as we talk through what the priorities are, and once we get to the budget and we can refine the priorities if we want to, I think I can fully engage in the conversation and the determination of where our city's going.
All right. If I could jump in, and I'm going to speak in...
All right.
His defense, is I don't think it was a matter of what you knew, it's when you would know it. That if you came in on November, you, you don't, you didn't start till January, so you didn't have the information. That's, that's what I heard. Is that what you were meant to say?
I'll let you guys decide how you would...
Okay. Because that's, that's what I heard. I didn't...
I said stand.
But I, I don't think it was meant that way, but, who am I? Anyone else says to be, Mr. Mayor?
Just to be clear, we're talking about letter L, actions that are based on work session or executive meetings. That's where we're, that's where we're at?
No.
No, we are on 10, council priorities, under J10.
Oh, J10.
Special Order Business.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
We're not there yet.
Okay, so, yes.
I don't know, what are there, 20 things on here or something? I think we should move cautiously forward. This is an outline at best, and I think it will change as we go on. But I would like to see it start to narrow down and actually have some action on our favorites. I don't think, I'm not sure that we can do 20 at once, but we could sure get a heck of a good start on seven or eight of them.
Counsel Anderson?
And also before, sorry, before. And, and, and to address Deanna, I, I think that even though we don't have it written down, as we work together, we have a pretty good idea of what's important to ourselves and important to our, our fellow counselors. And that's going to come through when we do the budget. And you're biased, there's going to be a bias when you do that bu- budget. And we're all going to know what each other's biases are. And I think we need to work together to help each other, you know, find your passion, what your, you know, develop your passion, I guess, until it becomes a reality. That's what I got.
Counsel Anderson?
Yeah, Mayor, the, I, I hate seeing, you know, three, two pages of potential priorities or areas of focus. A lot of them different or in addition to what our normal business is. So I, I'm a real basic kind of thinker, and I made my own list, and I even printed the list. But it's simple, you know, if, if you're given me a choice to direct the band, and that is directing Mr. Chandler, I want to see sewer, water, public safety, streets, taken care of. I, I don't want to even have to think about them. Toilets flush, police are out there, staffed. And then I would pick two other things that we've talked about and have been on the table. One is, you know, and Mayor, I may not have the right words, but it's, it's one you've constantly talked about, is upgrading the appeal of our city. You know, and Counsel Ward, get rid of blight. To me, those are the, the, the one, somehow, however you want to call it. So Mr. Chandler and his staff would be working on the four things that we, that run our city, sewer, water, police, streets. And when time permitting, you know, doing the code and blight or other strategies to increase the appeal of our city. And then the last would help us better define and move on facilitating housing in this community. I think anything that takes time and energy and dollars away from that activity, you know, just puts us further behind.
All right, well, then, I'm sorry, I'm going to need a little help with the direction of the council on this. Again, I'm, I'm good taking the first step, and, but I'm also, I can agree with Counsel Anderson that, you know, we can narrow it, but I just, for me, it's, let's get started. And then, Mr. Mayor, if you want to whittle, we'll whittle.
Yeah. So I agree that those are important priorities. But is that our council, what we have been tasked to do by the people we represent, to bring about? I believe that those city functions should exist in its full capacity naturally, not something that we have to encourage and bring about on its, our own. Yes, we want to be able to do those things, but when we're saying, when we're representing the people, what, what are they saying? What is it? What are those priorities? So I disagree slightly of the council priorities versus the, the established different agencies or, you know, the different government things that we have already. So I look at council priorities as kind of not the typical things that are needed to operate the city. So I just, I'm just saying I disagree with that.
Okay.
A little bit.
I would hope that, you know, in rebuttal, that, you know, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. Again, not to be insulting, but, you know, we, we also, I, I would think by now you've learned that the sewer, water, police, and streets don't just happen naturally. And that's why you're here. You're managing the budget, you're, you're working on the budget. And so I, I want to make sure that never do we have to hear, my ideal would, never would we have to hear about those kind of things. And we, I'm assuming we're staffed to make that happen. I don't know how much slippage we have in staff, quite frankly, to do a whole bunch of other things. And I think we're, not unlike any other council, it's easy for us to come up with a new idea and say, "Why not?" So I'm just cautioning and say, since housing has been on the block for ever, you're in my lifetime, and, and blight, you know, you pick off a couple of things and show movement on those, emphasize. And, and again, I'm just trying to gather, not even I know that it's there, gather any kind of excess productivity that might be there and focus it on these two things. Because I, I think we can look and complain about housing, you know, and why hasn't the villages moved to pick on the villages and do all these things? And, you know, I, I can name a lot of excuses, but it gets down to focus. So I'm saying, focus.
Yeah, and for me, I think that's, again, I, I just, all I'm asking council to consider is to say, "Yes, tonight." We're not tied to anything. But then Mr. Chandler can go, "Oh, okay, now I can move forward." Then you talk to your people, your staff, and they can say, "Yeah, we can do this entirely matter. We can't do, here's what the resources are going to take to do these things. You can come to us." And at that point, we go, "Yeah, we agree. You can move forward on that." Or, you know, as Counsel Anderson was saying, "Hey, that's going to just take us way off base here." And at that point, we, we refine and, and say, "That's not what we want to do." Does that sound right, did I?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
You know, I think we could use one more, at least one more meeting, that we can get, get this a little more focused, a little more refined. And I think that would serve us, because right now you've got a lot of, a lot of light wishes, but when, if we, as we focus in, it'll help us decide really what the, the priorities are. And this has been a nice job, so, as far as it goes. But I, I think if refining and filtering, it needs another filter.
Are you suggesting maybe, then we just start right now? We say sewer, each point, yes, no? How do we get that to Ron?
Just take it off, take it off. It's something we're supposed to be doing anyway. And I would remove it from the list because I think that was what Riley and... Thank you, Kelly.
Whoever he is, the guy.
That guy down there, Counselor Anderson, we're saying, is that if those, or else just put them in another category. We will be working on sewer, water, streets, police. I mean, can it be a given in some way on this? And then when we have time, where we have extra effort available or whatever it takes to do the next group of things, then we can actually focus, I think. You have a counselor down there.
Yeah, please.
Maybe we can take a look at, at the strategies. Maybe we don't need to kind of zero in on the strategies, but the topics. To me, I'm overwhelmed by the strategies, and maybe they'll change as we go along through the, through the topics, because it's kind of hard to, to put these specific strategies, I think, maybe, on paper, because they'll, they'll be so variable. And just look at the topics.
You know, I, this isn't quite non-secular, but twenty years ago, I was in a situation where we had a lot of choices to make and an unlimited amount of resources and, and a handful of decision-makers to make those choices. And what they had us do, I've never forgotten it, is all of the things that they were talking about that were the choices were put up on this big board. And each, each of the decision-makers were given, I can't recall, but I think it was 25 little dots. Yeah, little stickies. And you could, you could put your stickies however you wanted. If you wanted to put your sticky under one thing and just put your, your votes that was that important to you, you could do that. But what was interesting is by the time it was done, we had a really good idea of what our priorities were, because your votes could be weighted. And I would, I would recommend a meeting actually where we did that type of thing.
Workshop stuff.
Yeah, workshop stuff, yep.
So one more workshop to refine this? I don't want to do it, but it's up to the council. Would the council like to have another work session do?
Yes, if we can actually, if I may answer. Yes, if we can do something like Commissioner Ward just was, Commissioner, Counselor Ward, sorry. Wrong ear. Ward was talking about, you know, I'm sitting awful close to you now. I wouldn't do that if I were you. Okay, here's my suggestion, which was his suggestion, that we have a work session, but that we pull out the pieces into a different category of the work that we have to do, sewer, water, streets, police, and the rest of these things we can put on a board and give us 10 dots and let us go. We'll be done in 10 minutes.
Counsel Hogue? What do you think? You want to have another work session?
Go with the pleasure of the council.
Pleasure of the council. Could we ask Ron just to do a work session? And have him come back with, I mean, he's kind of gotten a feel for what we've been saying of trimming, and, I don't know, I just, I just don't want another meeting.
You've got two work sessions that are coming up. One on Monday, which is dealing with workforce housing, and, pardon me?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but actually, in your report, your weekly report, it says that workforce housing is on the...
We, we had to change that, because there's some budgetary implications... We, we had to change that, because there's some budgetary implications associated with workforce housing. We've put some money in the budget that needs to have that information, and so, I believe I sent that in an email today, that there were some budgetary implications that required us to make that change. So, workforce housing is scheduled for, uh, Monday, and economic development is scheduled for the fifteenth.
We're free to mess around in that, though, right? I mean, we can say...
They're your meetings.
Yeah, so, okay, do you want to just turn that into that discussion, hold this off until that, that work for everyone? We're gonna have the meeting anyway?
Yeah. If it's only gonna add fifteen minutes to it, let's just add it to a meeting.
Refine what you want, and then, let's give it to Ron, that work. I'm seeing guesses.
But I still want to cover what we need to before the next budget hearing, correct?
Well, that's up to you.
I want to cover what he feels is important for us to talk about prior to the next budget hearing. Yep.
Okay. All right.
I might note that in every one of the work sessions that we've had, there are budget implications, and every, and the budget reflects at least something with every work meeting that we've had.
Yeah.
There is something in the budget that's reflective of everything we've discussed in the budget. Now, it's really important to know that, for example, if your emphasis is on homelessness, and we've had that discussion, there's been no direction by the council yet, but we've discussed homelessness, there is a budget item that reflects that. It's in the outside agency request. It's an additional fifty thousand dollars towards that. If the council's interested in, in that and they feel that's the right number, great, we've established one of your priorities. If you feel it's too low and it should be more than that, then we need, then we will, that will be flushed out during the budget process when seven other people will agree with you. Eight people will agree that it should be more, or eight people will agree with, will be less. It's really important to understand the budget relationship with the, with your priorities, because that's where your priorities get flushed out and really actually happen, it's within the budget. And so, um, and so, when we talk about economic development, the budget reflects the shifting of the staff's work to spend more time on the attraction and retention of business, and there's, and there are funds that will reflect that. Um, as we talk about workforce housing, again, there's some budget implications with that. So, every work meeting that we've had so far, what I have been able to gain is a sense, my sense of where the council wants to go, the budget is reflecting that. Um, if I have not done well in pointing those items out, I will do better on that. But, uh, but again, every work meeting we've had, there is something that's reflected in the budget, and, you know, if you're not seeing where those are, please let me know and I'll make sure that I point them out.
Okay. Um, what's the time of the meeting?
Two thirty.
And I'm sorry, the, the date of the economic development work session?
May fifteenth.
Thank you.
Now, again, um, I had made that change, I hadn't informed the council on it. If you would like to do the economic development on the first and the other one on the fifteenth, for the staff, we are really, we are at your pleasure. You just tell us where you want to go and we'll, we'll do our best to get you there.
Don't change anything.
Well, I...
Well, they let, let us change.
No, I, I would like to go with your suggestion that we go with workforce housing on May first.
Okay, so we're good. And while we have, because I'm going to forget again, who's with me on the outside agency requests? Is that you, Councilor Houghlin? Who did? No, no, we've already decided.
It was last year.
No, we talked about who's going to do that with me this year. I know we did, and I can't, you remember? Kathy?
No, I didn't think that any decision had been made. Usually, that's on the date of the budget, when that decision's made.
Yeah, I don't think we've talked about it this year.
Okay, so I need someone to join me, and, and no offense to the elder council members, but I'd sure like to have someone new, uh, join me.
I would like to know what does it involve?
Basically, we go through the requests, and we balance it against the, the actual budget that we have, and it always far exceeds what we have, and so then, we have to window that out and decide who gets what. It's an hour, hour and a half.
I'd like to do that.
Okay. Would, is that good?
Um, is it, is it in our council rules, who does it? Who can do it?
No, other than that, the mayor appoints the committee members, but that's about it. More can join, I just, the more people get involved, I, you know, I, I sat through it with, with Chester and Roger, and we got through pretty quick, thanks to Chester, uh, but it's just, it's nice just to, but, if you want to be part of it?
No, I do not.
I'm totally okay.
So, three would be the best number.
Three is, yeah, three is max.
I'll do it next year.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Just so that you'll remember, we can't have that meeting until after the budget has been adopted, because we don't have the total for you to assign.
Okay. So, then, Councilor Casper and Councilor Houghlin, you want to join me on that? Uh, we'll make it work for your time schedule.
Sure.
Okay. So, that's the three of us, and then as soon as the budget's done, we'll move to that. Okay, great. I kept forgetting to say something over and over and over. Okay, um, we're done with this, right? City manager, city attorney reports. Mr. Pacello? Mr. Chandler?
Yes, I have just, well, no, I don't have anything for this portion, I do for the next.
Okay, actions if any based on work session or executive session meetings. I see work session underlined, do we have something?
We do. You had a work meeting last week on, that dealt with, um, the raising and keeping of domestic fowl, or chickens, and homelessness. Um, if you recall, we've tried to structure these work meetings so that at the next council meeting or thereafter, it doesn't have to be today, it can be at some time, if the council wants to give the staff direction on how to proceed, they're able to do so. If you don't give us, if you don't say anything, we, uh, will simply just hold off until we do get some direction. So, um, so that's where we are with both of those.
Well, if I recall, well, Mr. Anderson, you've got a better memory than I do, do you want to say something about that?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, after our, our last meeting, that work session, I, I took an opportunity to, um, review the planning commission agendas for the last few times, and it was, looked like they'd been doing a lot of training and not much else, so I, I think, uh, my motion's very appropriate to give them something to do. And that would be for council to refer to the planning commission, um, our existing Lincoln City municipal codes dealing with, um, domestic fowl, um, and any, um, other codes so related. But to specifically look at the things we identified as missing, you know, the option of, of enclosing of some type to be defined, the fowl on either property or in a building, a coop. And the other, exploring the, um, distance from such coop or outbuilding to a neighbor's building.
Any and all dwellings.
Any other, but, yeah, neighboring dwellings.
Right. That sounds reasonable.
And if I could add to that, um, I can't, I don't, didn't bring it with me, so I don't know, but you, um, gave us a list of existing, um, ordinances and codes that we could look at. And there was one, it was at the bottom, and I suggested that we add, um, there was a list of harms that could, or injury to, um, to, there was that list, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah.
And I added and/or, um, property, adjacent property, which I thought would be helpful, and so, with that list, if we could add that to...
Well, that, I don't know if matters unless we get a, a second, but the idea was, I, I tried to make it broad enough. I started listing the sections of the code and thought, why not send the whole thing to them doing with domestic fowl and then let them relook at it? Um, because there might be other things that they think ought to change, and these were just too various, specific.
Okay, so, that's the motion.
That's second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
I have, I have some discussion.
Okay.
Chicken man. Uh, first of all, I have to be totally candid that I have five chickens, uh, but also that I'm not speaking in my own self-interest, because, uh, the layout that we have meets any and all proposed regulations, so it wouldn't have any effect on me whatsoever. Um, but, um, having said that, uh, I don't know if any of you have raised chickens, uh, if you have a big chicken farm, I suppose they make noise, but they don't make any noise unless they're under threat. Um, and, um, uh, for a lot of people in town, uh, they, uh, they grow their own eggs, it's a way to get cheap, inexpensive protein, and, uh, they rely on that, uh, as, to add to their, their nutrition every day. And, uh, just because one person complains about chickens, for us to have, I don't know if this is our third meeting on it or something, and then back into planning commission, uh, when the, when the mayor and Mr. Anderson went out, really didn't find any problems, um, I just think it's a waste of time and does far more damage than it does good. And, um, I guess that's what I have to say.
And just for clarity, I didn't go out, I think it was Mr. Chandler and Mr. Anderson? Yeah.
Ex-Mayor Anderson.
Okay. Um, anyway, okay, any further discussion? Uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Me.
Me.
Okay, well, I'm throwing in an a, so, motion carries. All right, anything else, Mr. Chandler?
Um, you had one other item you discussed during this meeting, and that was homelessness.
I think that was your motion to cover both of those issues?
No.
No, it was just the chicken one, okay. Actions if any? I got nothing.
I don't even know the potential.
If I remember the last, well, I remember the last meeting we talked to and kind of pointed out to the, the advocates that they need to come back to us for something.
Recommendation that, uh, or the discussion points that, that we gave to you as staff was to, one, increase the budget amounts for outside agency requests, and, and dedicate the increase to the organizations that serve homelessness. This will include developing criteria through an application process for dispensing these funds. By the way, that is in the budget, okay? Uh, focus and incre, and increase the city's efforts on economic development, specifically with the intent of raising wages. And three, focus and increase the city's efforts on workforce and affordable housing. And then, there was quite a bit of discussion that the council had on that, and so, um, if you, if you want to give us direction tonight, that's great. If you don't, that doesn't mean you can't do so in the future, it just means that at this point, if, without any further direction, the staff will not be taking up any more action.
Well, for myself, the, the one I think is, is easy to do, as far as make a decision, would be the increasing the amount to the, uh, the outside agency requests. I don't have an amount in mind, but that seems an easy choice. The other two seem to be something to ponder.
Well, you, you have plenty of time to think about your outside agencies, because it's a budget item, not, not here.
Right, right. So, that's just an April discuss anything in the future, that's probably the only thing I'm interested in.
Yeah.
If I may, I would say that I agree with you, but we haven't seen a proposal that would go beyond the additional fifty percent, fifty thousand dollars that, um, the city manager has dropped into the budget as a placeholder, so, I don't know what we can talk about until we get something back to us, as far as...
Yeah, I would like to know where would that money come from, and just the, the details of what we would be taking it from to increase it.
Beyond the, beyond the fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, no.
Okay, so, we're kind of taking no action tonight? Is that kind of, yeah? Okay, is that it?
That's it for me.
Okay. Uh, actions if any based on executive session meetings, I think.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Well, the, the one thing we've got to talk about is, um, we have an issue with, because the council has three people under its authority, uh, city manager, city attorney, circuit judge. One thing that came to our attention is, circuit judge, I'm...
Municipal judge.
Municipal judge, thank you. Um, is that we really don't have a point person for them to go to when you have issues of vacation, leave, uh, "Hey, I'm not going to be around for a while." Uh, I think we need to determine a person that those three could talk to, uh, for the council, at least, and, and then be the conduit to the council. Does that summarize kind of what, you weren't there for most of the discussions, so, it's just kind of a, how do we make it easier for everybody?
Got a reaction?
Please.
Which is what I have. Um, right now, when at least either of these two, um, take, um, vacation time, they email us and let us know, and I suppose with just adequate notice, then we could deal with it. I don't know why we need to, is there more to this than, than if they're going to be out of the office?
Yeah, um, having had discussions with, with CIS and, and other agencies, they had said, most municipalities have this already established, that there is someone that, there's a point person for council, for their employees to go to, much as, you know, uh, the city has the HR person to go to, rather than just saying, "Hey, city, here's what I'm doing today." I know, that's a bad example, it's the best I can come up with. Um, I, I, for me, it makes sense that we appoint someone who can then communicate with us, but if the council does not agree with that, uh, what are your thoughts?
I, um, move to, appoint, um, Councilor Anderson as that point person.
Okay, and I don't know that we have to have a, I think we, with the idea that we could revoke it or change it, or, yeah, yeah, at some point. Okay. Second? I'll second that. Motion second, any discussion, please?
What would the process be?
What process is that?
To inform, to inform the point person.
These three individuals would then, if any, if there's any change in their status, they would come to Councilor Anderson and say, or if he accepts this decision, that point person, and say, "Hey, here's what's going to happen, I, I need this time." That person then would communicate with the council, and it could be via email or whatever, but I just, is that satisfactory?
I'm not sure. It could be nine.
If, if I can weigh in a little bit.
Sure.
Um, to do this, one of the things that you're, one of the things that could come of this is that you're changing the nature of the form of government that you have, uh, where you could, in a sense, be creating a position where that, where the, one of the three of us is being supervised by one council member. I would, I would think that if you want to do this, it would have to be in some kind of an extraordinary event. It would not be for something like, um, any kind of final disciplinary action, that should all come from the city council.
I don't know.
It would not be for anything such as the, uh, the firing, or it would not be for, even for things such as taking time off, we can send emails to you guys and things like that. I just worry a little bit about changing what is the form of our government and, and who the three of us report to. So, I would think that what you would be looking at would be on a case-by-case, extraordinary basis.
Well, and, and I hear you, I, I, maybe I'm not being clear, I'm looking at it as just a communication conduit. There is no, no decisions being made, there's no authority given, it's just one person to talk to, to say, "I have this going on." Can you tell the council? That's all I'm seeing.
I, quite frankly, don't think that this is necessary. We receive emails when either of them, and the judge, who knows, but the, either of these two, when they're going to be out for a bit, and if they want to take one of us aside and confide in one of us, that's fine, but we cannot email more than three of us, so we can't do it.
That's not true. You, you can email everyone. You can say, "Here's what's going on, here's what I think." You, you have that.
But I thought that if there were four or more of us emailing, then we have a meeting that isn't...
You're discussing policy, or, I mean, before the council.
I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't think we need this.
I'm just telling you what they said to me from CIS. CIS does do this.
I don't think we need it.
They're our insurance provider and, yeah.
I, I don't see any point, I mean, we've been informed previously, um, I didn't know there was a problem.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I, I agree, I, I just think this is, hasn't been well thought out, and it's going to have unanticipated consequences.
Mr. Mayor? Well, I just want to make sure everyone is... Well, I just want to make sure everyone is really clear. This is not my idea. This was suggested to me by our insurance provider, the people who write the policies, who make the decisions about who gets paid and problems or not. I'm just passing the word saying they recommend we have this.
And my motion was a contact person.
Right, just a contact person. And we have a second. So any still discussion?
Yeah. You know, I agree that they have been very good at communicating. And if it's something as far as like planned vacations, there could be some sort of secured calendar that these are the dates of which I'm not going to be here, that we only have access to. Obviously, they get sick and not are going to be here. Is it appropriate to tell them to tell us when they're not going to be sick for something? I just, I don't agree.
And it, yeah, I wish I was better at communicating the issue here. There are issues that come up beyond just the simple request like that. We kind of act in a human resource capacity, too. And we, because of the nature, we have to do everything out in public. Not that this circumvents that, but it, it streamlines the process. Again, I'm going on a recommendation of our insurance provider. I leave that to the council. So any further discussion? We heard from Mr. Chandler. Can we hear from Mr. Appicello?
I, given the limitation that this is a conduit for passing along information and not, as Mr. Chandler stated, a change in the form of government, I don't have any objection to having a contact person on council. I still think that Mr. Chandler and I would of course notify you in advance by sending an email to all of you. But if something was to come up that it just wasn't practical to notify everybody, I don't think having one person designated to receive notice is a problem.
Right, because I can think of a couple of different times when I'm just not near my email. I'm not going to get that notice, and something has to happen. Someone needs to be told. And this way, the council has said, yes, we've been notified.
I appreciate Mr. Chandler's concern at the, you know, the council can appoint someone to supervise, you know, a public officer, but I don't think that's what the intention is here. I think it's just a conduit.
Exactly. Again, I'm just going on the CIS's recommendations on this. So any further discussion? Just since we've got so many, can I just do a quick roll call, Kathy, just so we can get the numbers right?
Ward.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hoagland.
No.
Hinton.
No.
Casper.
No.
Walkie.
Yes.
Okay, motion fails.
Three and four, motion fails.
Okay. Then that's it on the executive session. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Seeing none, thank you all. Announcements or comments by city council?
I always have something to say. I'm trying to curb that. But anyway, I have two things. One is further work session for the workforce housing now on May 1st. Can we please make that a joint work session with the planning commission?
If you would like me to. If there's no objections to that, I will invite the planning commission to come.
Why?
Yeah.
Some of the same reasons you were saying, that they, they would like to get their teeth into something. They want to be working. And I know from three of them that they're frustrated. We don't want to lose them. And furthermore, they would be, whatever we talk about with housing, with any, with anything coming out of that discussion, that it is, that we should probably just assume that there would be zoning changes perhaps, or PUDs to discuss, or standards to look at. And that would be the body to begin that work. So I think it's very appropriate that they and we have a joint work session when it comes to housing.
My feeling is that we're the policymakers and they do the work that's directed, but they can't make policy.
And I would add to that, Counselor Walkie, that through the interview process of planning commission, the multitude of the interviews, answers back to us were policy question, policy comments. So I would agree that they may, the commissioners may be frustrated because they thought they were going to sit in these seats and make policy decisions. Just an observation from listening to them. And, you know, at this point, I don't think anything's on the agenda that says changing zones or ordinances, or, you know, it's, well, I don't know what the work session is, so.
And they're always welcome to come and listen.
Yeah, that's right. They're televised.
They can come in person.
I know it's always nice to be inclusive and sharing, but there comes a time when too many talkers makes for a long day.
Thank you.
That was for you, Mayor.
Yeah. And then I'm going to ask just one, this is just a decorum issue, guys. I know we all want to get out of here, but the slamming and banging and stuff is getting a little distracting, so if we can hold off to pack up our gear for a minute here. Okay. So I'm kind of hearing thanks or no thanks. Okay, a good suggestion. Okay. And did you, did you have a feeling on that?
No, no, something else.
Okay. Anyone else on something, please?
Yes. This is in regards to our eclipse coming up. Recently listened to Mr. Chandler with, on the radio with Cheryl Harrell. Read the emails that were coming out, and now we have a emergency operations center, and it's still being treated like an emergency. And so for me, this is like some kind of catastrophic event. Now, I know you've said this is an opportunity to test our emergency preparedness, but still, I'm very concerned and have had many people voice similar concerns to me. The front page of the NewsGuard last week, I believe, or this week, has stay indoors, watch from the window. And that's, that's the message that we, the city, are sending out. And having to talk to people about this situation, about our city and what we can do, and being told to buy the food in advance, don't leave your house, stay indoors, don't go anywhere. You know, I don't think that that's what, we're not protecting our own people. It's protecting them, but it's not like putting the tourists ahead of us. You know, so they're going to, they're going to be the ones serving, feeding, interacting with all these people. I've had people scared to death about how they're going to come to work the day of the event. How, where are they going to stay? How are they going to live? How are they going to get to work? And what do we say to those people? Rent a hotel room, leave for work, you know, four in the morning when you work at eight. And at the same time as all of that, we're telling tourists to come a day early and stay a day late. So at the same time, we're saying to our residents, don't go outside, but for everybody else, come a day early and stay a day late. So, and in part of that emergency operations center, it's done with city employees. Will your guys' be, schedules be adjusted from the earlier and later? And, you know, and so that you don't occur over time, or how, you know, how are you guys going to handle that for your own self? And that, you know, I'm sure you guys want to participate in that as well and see this event, too. And so, but if you're in the planning room, you know, how, you know.
Tell, just, first of all, the message isn't just the city that's saying that, okay? I share your concerns because it's not just, actually, we have had very little of that message of stay in, watch it from the windows, buy all your groceries early. That's coming from different organizations. But obviously, there's concerns that the council has that the staff is not meeting. So tell me what you want me to do differently.
I'm just saying what has been coming to me and what I've heard you say and what I've read, and these are the concerns that are coming to me. I don't know how to handle the situation. I don't know what to do or say. But there's all these other people here together, and that maybe we all can come up with something to do and say and how to be and all this other stuff. I'm just one person.
Again, I'm asking you collectively.
Oh, okay.
I'm asking all of you.
Thank you.
We're apparently not satisfying what your desires are as far as the eclipse because this keeps coming up. So tell me what you would like us to do differently.
Well, I would say on my side, I'm not, I'm not joining Counselor Hoagland. And I, I can hear a hundred different things from a hundred different people. I'm satisfied the city is taking steps to mitigate as many problems as possible. It's impossible to know what's going to happen. I was just reading an article in the Ben Bulletin about a town, I think it's called Mission, that has 750 residents. They are anticipating 50,000 people. They are in full panic mode. They are in the perfect place to see the eclipse, light pollution, dah 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 dah. They hit every mark that you can tick off. And their idea is, well, it's going to happen. We can only do so much. And it's, we don't know. And so I'm not going to, for me, I'm happy. I commend you for what you've done. I think you've gone over and above on this issue of an unknown. And I'm satisfied.
Your Honor.
Yeah.
The other point I wanted to make, and I agree with, with Mayor Williams, and I appreciate the fact that you're scheduling more meetings with groups. The emergency operations center is something that already existed. That, that was not a new thing for the eclipse. That's always existed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware.
Yeah.
It's a great place to visit, by the way. Ron took me there right after he was brought on, and it's really great to see.
I feel like things are evolving. I mean, things have been moving along. The city's been given a huge task, and the staff, even huger task. And I think if we all just kind of sit still quietly, things will filter out and get attended to. Be patient.
When's the next one? In 40 years, next eclipse?
Don't tell the answer to that.
We've got that planning going for that one. Okay, thank you, Kathy.
We will be holding a series of public meetings, both in this building, community center, and then trying to go out to as many organizations. I think we're going to the Nell Scott HOA this weekend, so trying to get the word out. I do not feel as panicky as other organizations that I've heard. As a matter of fact, my wife attended one, and I heard what they said, and I thought, holy smokes, what are you doing? I do think that there are some very good things that our residents can do. For example, if you have the ability to walk to work, walk on that day. Or if it's a nice bright day, ride your bike. You know, expect a lot of cars, expect a lot of people, expect a lot of people in your neighborhood. No matter how much we try to block roads and keep people from parking on streets, they're going to do that. So, you know, I'm not as panicky as the message, but there are some good precautions that people should take, to just be prepared.
Be good hosts.
I think the more we talk about it, the better it will come out, too, you know?
I totally agree. But I'm, I'm satisfied. Ms. Casper?
This isn't eclipse-related.
Really? Thank you. Don't miss points.
This is good news. I attended a library board meeting on your behalf, Mr. Mayor, earlier this month, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And I realized I wasn't given a board liaison position, so I was wondering if you wouldn't be brokenhearted if you could appoint me as that person for the library board.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I hereby resign. And I recommend appointment to, for that, to Counselor Casper. So welcome aboard. Thank you. And thank you for volunteering. I mean that sincerely. You saw that it wasn't getting covered, and you stepped up, and I appreciate that. I tend to overcommit, but thank you for that.
I just have one reminder.
And this is now the official, get the mayor's attention.
Well, it works.
I know, but the one thing I do want to say is, is the audio doesn't pick it up. So just for, for transcription's sake. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. It's just a reminder that we need to schedule another executive session.
Yeah, thank you. We're in another executive, May 8th. Works for me.
Your Honor, I had an announcement.
Please.
Last Friday was the beginning of Lincoln City's celebration of volunteerism, what we call community days. And we had a beautiful sunny day on our first day, and since then we've had rain. There are lots of events all week. Thursday's a day you can hope for sun because there won't be people in front of Kenny's IGA from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. collecting canned food. So that's not fun in the rain.
Will Ms. Oregon be there for that?
I think she will sometime. Ms. Oregon, Ms. Oregon arrives in town on Tuesday and will be at the Chamber Lunch. And she will be here through Saturday evening, which is the banquet where the awards are given, Saturday, the 29th. She and Patrick Alexander will be hosting. You can, I believe, still get tickets for the banquet through the Chamber Office.
And I'll, I'll jump on that. For anyone out there who hasn't had a chance to meet a Ms. Oregon, terrific people. I've had the honor of meeting, I think, the last three. And you'd be just, throw out the stereotypes. These are well-educated, well-spoken ladies who are pursuing their goals. And it's great that they come here and give us their time so freely. It's really an honor, I think, for us. And they appreciate Lincoln City's hospitality and that. So, anyone else? Okay, I think the only thing.
I have something.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to need some help here from the rest of the council, but we have a new restaurant by the Vieux. It's the hot dog.
The Grill?
The Grill. What's the name of it?
The Grill.
Forty-six.
Sixteen forty-six. Talk to people. I guess it's wonderful. And it's a great addition to that area. And it's important because when you read your Roger Brooks study, there's a point that you get there, that these are sparks, and when you get enough of them, it'll build a fire there. And.
And you're talking about where Pumpkinberry's was?
Yes.
Oh, I thought they were most of the grill.
Grill sixteen forty-six.
Okay.
So it's a handsome addition. It kind of goes well with prehistoric. And Ocean Lake is becoming more vibrant. And also, nice job, Bradley's, on the, on the Old Elk's Lodge. It's looking nicer every time, so.
And you inadvertently said there's the new business called Sparks, actually, in Ocean Lake, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also Enrique's is moving.
That's total coincidence.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'd say. Yeah, Enrique's has moved up, and they're going to be, yeah, from the south end to, to where Deli 101 used to be. Okay, is that good? Okay. I think the only thing, go ahead. Did you have something else?
No.
No, okay. We've got the banquet on the 29th. We're going to meet again, not till the 8th. National Day of Prayer, Thursday, the 4th, at the Cultural Center. I do not have the time on that. I'm sorry. Thursday, the 4th?
All day.
Well, I understand that, but we're not going to all be, there'll be a gathering at the Cultural Center, as far as I know. Anyway, if that's it, then may God bless you all. May God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned.
All right.
No, that's okay. I'm easily confused.